Good evening, everyone, and welcome to council meeting on August 6. And just as I'm calling the meeting to order, I might just let everyone know, especially members of council, we have some technical difficulties with the mic system this evening. So if I look like I'm a bit frazzled and talking to the clerk a lot, it's because she's going to manage the request to speak from members of council. She'll put it on a piece of paper, so I'll keep that organized, just so you will aware. Anyway, will everyone please rise for the singing of the National Anthem? the land traditionally used by the Haudenosaunee, Ashenabe, and the Neutral people. We also acknowledge the enduring presence and deep traditional knowledge and philosophies of the indigenous people with whom we share this land today. Thank you. Members of council, are there any items that you'd wish to declare pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we will move ahead. Just before we get going, I did want to point out that it's a bittersweet evening. This is our interim city manager, Jeff Wilmer's, last council meeting. And I wanted to, on behalf of members of council, city staff, and the citizens in Cambridge, to acknowledge that we are extremely grateful to yourself, to your wife, Herman, and your family for allowing you to come out of retirement for a few short months while we were in a critical period in the city's history. As you know, you started in the beginning of March. We were on the search for a permanent city manager at a time of flux, not only with a new council, but also with, you know, some changing circumstances from our provincial funding and a number of other issues. So on behalf of myself and council staff, I really do want to thank you so very much for the steady hand, the guidance that you've provided all of us, and the increased presence that we have at the region and other levels of government due to your steady guidance. So thank you so very much. And could we give you some applause? Thank you. Thank you very much, and please thank your family on our behalf. So we will get going now with item number two on the Rainbow Crosswalk installation. And we have a few delegations, and the first up is Charlie Davis. Charlie, will you approach the podium? And you have up to five minutes to speak. Welcome, Charlie. You might want to pull the mic down. There you go. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much for this opportunity. So I am here today as the co-chair of the Rainbow Community Council, but I also am a scholar as well as a lifelong resident of the Waterloo region. So I just wanted to take, like, a few moments to talk about the symbolism and the symbolic gesture that a rainbow crosswalk gives. And I kind of wanted to start off by talking about a story from the weekend. So I was telling my family that I wanted to come here to share my stories and my experiences, and my family was talking about, like, the cost, why is it important? And we kind of got into this argument, and it kind of really struck to me that being an LGBT person and being a queer person, it's one of those few identities that our families do not share with us. So when we have hardships and we have problems in the communities, we can't always go home and have that safe haven of home in our families to go to, which is why building capacity and building community in the broader region and in the community general is such an intentional process for our community and for us. And it's not always the most, you know, easy or difficult things. A lot of these times, these things take decades. And in the Waterloo region, we have been very successful. We have built a very strong and vibrant queer community. And having a rainbow crosswalk would be very symbolic of our hardships and of our struggles and the things that we have gone through previously to get to the point where we are. So it's not, you know, a fast solution. It would be more of a gesture from the city to kind of take some of that burden that the queer people have to build the community. It would be a symbol that the city is helping us to build that community in the region. Sorry. As a scholar, I can tell you that, you know, queer people have some of the highest rates of, you know, feeling unsafe in public spaces, feeling unsafe in their families. So we just want to be able to have that space in the region where we would build. Having been in part of the Waterloo region for my entire life, I can tell you that I have had really great experiences building that community and building, you know, that support in the region. But because we have a lack of visibility, when people come into the region, they don't feel the same safety that I do. So it's absolutely heartbreaking to me when I hear people say, "You have no queer community. There are no spaces. I don't feel safe here. I don't belong here." And then they move on. So I think that having crosswalks and having those reminders that this is a safe space, the community is doing, and the city is doing a really great job at trying to build that capacity within themselves to be a safe environment for queer people, I think would go a long way to making sure that people feel safer. So I just want to say thank you for the fact that I can even be here to speak on this and some of the great work that the city is doing.
Thank you, Charlie. Will you just wait at the podium for a moment? Are there any questions or comments? Charlie, would you come back to the podium just for a moment in case there's questions from members of council?
Sorry.
Counselor Mann.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. Charlie, thank you for sharing. It's important for us to hear the things that you said this evening. Are there other organizations or groups that we as a community and we as a city should recognize in this particular way?
I would say any group or community that feels marginalized should be recognized.
Thank you, Charlie.
No other speakers, Charlie. You may be seated. Thank you. I will just remind members in the gallery this evening that here at City of Cambridge, we do follow the code of conduct quite closely. And in that regard, we find that if there's applause, or noise, or comments from the gallery, it can intimidate others that may not have the same point of view. So I'm going to ask that people do refrain from any kind of indication after somebody has spoken, whether they're for or against. Thank you. The next delegate we have is Connie Cody. Connie? Welcome, Connie.
Madam Chair, councilors, staff, and members of the public. My name is Connie Cody, and I'm here this evening to discuss the matter of the rainbow painted crosswalk. This suggestion is being brought forward for approval with a cost of $15,000 tax dollars. This is a lot of money at a time when we need to spend our tax dollars more wisely. Outdoor pools are services that equally benefit a larger portion of our community by keeping youth engaged and our seniors more actively involved in a healthy lifestyle while meeting provincial requests to create community hubs, and yet they are being closed. $15,000 is more than many of our seniors receive in a pension to survive off of for an entire year. $15,000 is enough to pay for affordable housing accommodation to assist a homeless person for over a year. $15,000 is enough to fund counseling for mental well-being for several persons who are in need. And yet, instead of focusing on matters for all who are in need, we are here discussing the excessive fees being proposed for a rainbow painted crosswalk as a symbol of inclusiveness. The fact is that rainbow crosswalks are considered to be one of the most divisive issues going. The vandalism that has happened in other cities and which will happen here will only increase fears and risk of public safety, at the same time increasing the cost for continuous maintenance and monitoring. Other cities have initiated a study where results will not be completed until 2021 due to concerns on many liabilities involving driver's safety and how decorative crosswalks can affect a driver's perception, be potential distractions or enhancements of negative motorist behaviors. If the purpose is to show support towards inclusiveness and diversity, there are other options that could be used, which does not segregate race, gender, sexuality, or any other exclusive category. Our city already shows support by flying a flag in recognition of the LGBT community. And we also have the opportunity to utilize Craig's Crossing, an already funded project with specific lighting that can be used to show support, and even something to be included within the existing theme of the old post office light show. We are so fortunate in our city to have these existing options that could be utilized. I've spent a lot of time researching, talking to people, and reading the many comments on these rainbow painted crosswalks, and found that there was an overwhelming lack of support from even those who are part of the LGBTQ community. They state that it is a waste of money and that efforts would be better spent to help all persons in need of mental well-being. A rainbow painted crosswalk has been seen to do more damage to social relations than good, and why it represents the very opposite of inclusiveness. It emphasizes differences rather than unite all persons with the many things we all share. It seems wrong to identify a person solely in terms of their sexual preference when there is so much more to celebrate. Whatever good intentions the rainbow crosswalk began with, it will do nothing but cause disharmony and becomes a precedent that gives council no logical grounds to dismiss or deny any other future requests for special recognition. If this proposal is approved, then I also request a crosswalk of red poppies to honor our veterans, a pink ribbon crosswalk in support of women suffering from breast cancer, a gold ribbon crosswalk to support the fight against childhood cancer, and in recognition of diversity, painted flags as crosswalks to represent residents of Cambridge who immigrated here from other countries. The suggestions are endless, and more will be forthcoming. If the city can nod or will not do for all, then it should not be done for any. Just because many people disagree with this proposal for many various reasons, it should never be interpreted as hate or homophobic, as this would be a false assumption. The costs involved are not being well-received by taxpayers, and never should it be the job of council to use people's own tax dollars to tell them what they should or should not believe. To conclude, I respectfully request that council not approve the rainbow painted crosswalk, but continue support by flying a flag at City Hall, utilizing lighting at Craig's Crossing, and the old post office light show to signify, to spark to any and all of our diverse communities as a more well-rounded format of inclusiveness. If, after all deliberations, council still decides to proceed, may the approval include that it be fully sponsored and not be publicly funded.
Thank you, Connie. I have Counselor Mann with a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. Thanks for your presentation, Connie. You said something that struck me, and I thought about today quite a bit. And you talked about other groups or organizations that should be represented. How many other groups do you think could or should be represented in this way if we went this way?
Like I said, just alone, the flags for every country for anyone who's ever immigrated here is excessive. It's endless. I wouldn't be able to give you an honest number, but there's got to be at least 50, 100. Like, there's a lot of groups and a lot of places that are asking for support.
Thank you. And you said that you felt that our flying of the flag and if we were to light Craig's Crossing and the old post office, that is another way in which we could represent the LGBTQ.
Right. It's something that I feel that would result in less vandalism and offer an opportunity. We are one of the few cities that actually have things like the light show happening and who fly a flag. Some cities might not be able to have the opportunity of a crosswalk, but we have other avenues that we could pursue. And we just included everything so that all groups have a chance, like in the old post office light show or the flag flying. I think we would meet a lot more of the needs and have less of a disharmony.
Thanks, Connie.
No further questions. The next delegation I have is Ben Warren and Ruth Cameron from AIDS Committee of Cambridge-Kitchener and Waterloo and areas. Please come forward. Welcome, Ruth. Welcome, Ben. You'll have up to 10 minutes.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll just start off my other areas of focus. And we have focused on initiatives that promote, support, and sustain inclusivity, equity, and anti-oppressive practice. The reason I make that distinction clear is that inclusiveness means that you want to include all, as was just mentioned, into your current situation where there is inequality. Equity means that you want to create the conditions where everyone has equal opportunity when it comes to creating equality across groups. I think it's important that that distinction is made. One of the initiatives that we're part of at AQUA is the Outlook Study, which is an actual evidence base that can be cited and actually sought for anyone who's interested in finding it. The Outlook Study is, we believe, Canada's largest LGBTQ needs assessment with 526 respondents from here in Waterloo region. So I'm really happy to be able to bring that actual evidence base. I am a doctoral student at Wilfrid Laurier University and one of the co-leads on the Outlook Study, as is Charlie. And we're happy to bring that evidence to anyone who's interested in finding out more about the needs regarding social inclusion and equity for LGBTQ people in this region. There are a lot of myths and stereotypes about identities and experiences of LGBTQ people, and something that I want to point out to you is that some of the more prominent ones are that we already have equity in this society, and that coming out is an issue, and that people already have achieved social inclusion. And unfortunately, that's not true. I want to point out that in the Outlook Study, 90% of the respondents stated there's a need for LGBTQ-friendly spaces within this region, and that 42% of cisgender, those are individuals who identify with the gender that was placed on them at birth, and 31% of transgender respondents in the study said that they felt a strong sense of community connectedness. Those are pretty low numbers. As you know, we're very conscious in Waterloo region of measuring social inclusion, and our social inclusion markers were not very good in the Outlook Study. For this and many other reasons, I urge a strong community support for a rainbow crosswalk. Every visible sign of progress to inclusion is important, and for every significant move toward progress, there is a backlash, as we can see. We're in a dangerous time in Canada with fascist and white nationalist factions growing in number and organizing against rights and inclusion for LGBTQ communities, as well as many other communities. As a Black lesbian executive director, working with marginalized LGBTQ communities in this region, a former staff person at Rainbow Health Ontario, a policy group that looks at health and social services measures for LGBTQ inclusion, I think that it's very important for these visible signs. I'm also the mother of a trans child, and I want to see visible signs of inclusion in our city centers, very close to our civic centers, as the proposed crosswalk is. I urge you to quickly move on this measure and create that visible sign of inclusion for LGBTQ people in Cambridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Benjamin Warren, and I'm the Gay Men Sexual Health Coordinator at the AIDS Committee of Cambridge-Kitchener Waterloo under the supervision of Ruth Cameron. And every day, I work with marginalized gay, bisexual, and trans men within the Waterloo region, many of whom hail from the lovely town of Cambridge, of which I'm also a resident, who are struggling to step into themselves as queer men in this community and struggling to find aspects of community support that they may not be receiving from their family and friends that may be situated in certain ideals and morals and values that are counteracting against those that are coming forth to bring an issue such as this. I ask the council and all of you present today to reflect on what the symbol of inclusion could mean for the people that I work with, for the people of the LGBTQ community that Ruth mentioned, and ask yourselves if there is a way to increase inclusion within this community, and it can come at the cost of a rainbow crosswalk. I do believe that the fruits of that labor will be worthwhile, and I look forward, hopefully, to it being approved by this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben, before you sit down, and Ruth, would you approach the podium in case we've got questions? Counselor Mann.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. And the question is for either one of you. We've heard Cambridge flies the flag. How would a light presentation on Craig's Crossing Bridge or on the old post office reflect compared to a crosswalk, in your opinion? How would that, what would the difference be? Or would there be, or would one be better than the other?
I would say that the symbolism is very different. Light presentation, I assume, wouldn't be permanent. It might be temporary, yes. When you're creating a crosswalk, you're creating a permanent marker. It was mentioned earlier about putting something up for veterans. We have cenotaphs in every single city and town in our country to recognize veterans. Those are permanent markers. A rainbow crosswalk is a permanent marker that says you belong here, just like anyone else.
Thank you.
No further council member questions, but I did have one, and Ruth, you might be the best one to answer it. My son had just sent me a picture of a rainbow crossing out in B.C. Do you know the history of them, where they started, why it is a crosswalk that seems to symbolize an inclusive and belonging place?
The first crosswalk that I know of was done in Australia, and there was, I think, quite a significant back and forth in the community about putting up that permanent crosswalk. It was meant as a symbol of inclusion. I don't know the city or town that that was located in, but it was meant to be located, as far as I can recall, in the city center, in the civic center, to create inclusion for individuals walking in the area that I would consider the commons within that town or city. So the symbolism wasn't only about inclusion, but inclusion in the actual civic center as a community member.
Okay. And another quick question, if I may. Do you know if there have been other rainbow crosswalks that have been sponsored by groups or other individuals rather than a city? Or do you know what the usual way of providing the cost is?
As far as I'm aware, most of them have been sponsored very intentionally by cities under the umbrella of their mission, vision, and values of integrity, respect to inclusiveness and service to the broad community at large, making sure that as cities animate their inclusion statements, they talk about the fact that there are some groups... fact that there are some groups that are recognized more and others that are less recognized within the community.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions. Thank you. Okay, counsel. I believe that Counselor Reed has the motion.
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Mann, the Rainbow Crosswalk Installation, that report nineteen dash two one sixteen C.D. Rainbow Crosswalk Installation be received, and that council endorse the installation of a Rainbow Crosswalk on Dixon Street at the intersection of Ainsley Street or Wellington Street. And further, that the funding in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars be allocated to the installation of the Rainbow Crosswalk. And I'd like to speak to it, if I may.
You may go ahead.
Thank you very much. Well, I want to, first of all, thank the group that has come here tonight to voice their opinions from the LGBTQ community. I think that it is wonderful that they have come out and that they have been able to give voice to what is happening here tonight. And I would also like to read a couple of things that I received today from different sections. One is from the Galt BIA. And they sent me an email and asked that it be read tonight. The downtown Cambridge BIA is in full support of the installation of a Rainbow Crosswalk in our core area. This highly visible installation is not only colorful, aiding in the beautification of our downtown, but reflects our inclusiveness as a community. And the second one that I received was from the Hesper BIA. The Hesper Village BIA applauds the efforts from the accessibility and diversity staff for their consultations and conceived initiation for the installation of a Rainbow Crosswalk in downtown Cambridge in support of the Diversity Accessibility and Inclusion Action Plan twenty eighteen to twenty two, twenty-two. The Hesper Village BIA would like to respectfully ask council to consider placing a second Rainbow Crosswalk installation within Hesper Village to aid in the beautification of our village and further support that Hesper Village is an inclusive, welcoming community. Further, the Hesper Village BIA acknowledges the reported cost associated with the Rainbow Crosswalk and would like to ask the council to direct staff to investigate more cost-effective alternatives to the production and installation of the Rainbow Crosswalk. So those are the two things that I received today that I wanted you to know about. What they were talking about is this report. And this is a report that we received, all of us received, back in twenty eighteen. And in this plan, we had, that was accepted by this council, that we would have a Rainbow Crosswalk. I think it's really important, as it has been stated tonight, that we follow through with this action plan. It's not enough to say, yes, we support you. We have to show it. And this kind of symbol shows that we are an inclusive community. We have to take action. We cannot just sit back and think that everything is okay. Because as you heard tonight, people from the LGBTQ community are not equal. They don't have equity in our society. They're still stigmatized in many places. And in many places, they do not feel safe. What we need to do as a council is to give the message loudly and clearly that this is a community that welcomes you. This is a community that says you are safe here. We want you here. We want you to be a part of our community. Having something that is permanent is the start of normalization of the LGBTQ community. And that's what we intend to do and what we need to do as a council and as a community. I think it's really important for us to take a stand tonight and for us to very clearly say to our community, we are, as it says here, we are stronger together. This is not divisive. This is togetherness. This is the way we show that we move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ermetta.
Okay. Thank you, Your Worship. Well, through you, I want to thank both group, I want to thank all the delegations for coming in on all the sides of the issue. I think that's great. And, you know, make no mistake that people are people. And on this council, we love, including our city staff, we love everyone. And everyone is welcome in this community. And we're all part of the Cambridge family and we are stronger together. So fully agree with that. The concern that I've got is the cost. When I have people in my ward telling me they'd like more money to cut the grass and things like that. But also, too, I've received some other requests in my, from communities in my ward that they would like to have one as well. And the concerns that they feel, some of them feel like they're victims of hate crimes and things like that, like legitimate concerns. And I've done some research on like crosswalks in general. And in the city of Windsor, they were presented with a number of different requests. And the city said, like, we've got to come up with a policy for this. And they took time to have staff look at some kind of a policy. And a number of other municipalities have done that as well. Some municipalities do set aside different funds and have a way to kind of determine, like, who gets the money. But there's also other municipalities that say you're allowed to use the city property, but you have to raise your own money and you have to be responsible for the maintenance of it as well. And I think it's a discussion that we need to have, you know? I mean, I'm fully in favor of being inclusionary, like inclusionary in that, fully support that. But I do want to be mindful that we're being fair to everyone, that we're giving all of the groups an opportunity, because there's a lot of legitimate groups out there. And we're all in the same family. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Montero.
Thank you, Worship. I've been giving this some thought. And the thought is that I come up with is fifteen thousand dollars is a lot of money for a crosswalk. And I, I'm going by crosswalk by what it says in the report. Is this a crosswalk or a crossover? Because there's a difference on legalities as far as, but I'll go with a crosswalk, which it falls under. Fifteen thousand dollars is a lot of money. We've got to see our priorities. We have, we have some issues in our cores. And fifteen thousand dollars could buy a couple of more security cameras. We have other issues with young people, that we don't spend enough money for young people to have activities such as splash pads, swings and parks. And fifteen thousand dollars goes a long way. In fact, fifteen thousand dollars is on payment on a house for a young couple that wants to buy a house. Fifteen thousand dollars is a lot of money. I'm not against inclusiveness, diversity. Hey, I come from a group that we like to be included, and we are, but we never displayed any, such as a crosswalk as a symbol. I have some, a tough time to get this. We have other things that we could spend that money with. But if the LGBTQ wants to have a crosswalk, not a crossover, a crosswalk in town on any of the cores, then they should raise the money. We'll give them the space to put it, but I cannot see us spending fifteen thousand dollars to do a Rainbow Crosswalk. I just can't, and I won't support it.
Thank you. Counselor Liggett.
Madam Chair, I move that we defer this to Budget and Audit Committee, since it is a sum of money. I've been getting a lot of emails, phone calls. I have a letter here that was sitting here for me today from somebody, where people are very concerned about the amount of money that's being spent here. I also have thoughts about when things like this are being brought in front of us, when maybe they should be being brought to us in Budget and Audit Committee time, so that we can look at those things that are necessary first and then go on to the other things. When I think about inclusiveness, having a Rainbow Crosswalk isn't going, the people who have a hatred or a lack of understanding or discriminatory, that's not going to change their minds. Something like this just shows that our city feels that everybody belongs and is accepted in our community. But I think that the comments of Counselor Montero are good ones, that maybe the money could be raised by somebody else, but as Counselor Ermetta said, that should maybe also be the operating costs for vandalism as well, maybe should be part of that. So I think that if we take that into Budget and Audit Committee, we can take a look at that then, and maybe we could also set together some policies, too. So I'm moving for a deferral on that. So we could, you know, time is budget not it.
Do you have a second, or? I have one more comment before we call the question on the deferral, which will supersede the motion. Counselor Ermetta.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I guess you're limiting it to time and place. I just wanted to put in something that maybe while we defer this, if the deferral passes, if we could just give some direction to staff to see what other policies there are in Ontario? Because three cities did fund raise, like Barry did, which a counselor actually was involved in, and then Chatham raised money, and so did Windsor, and there might be more.
So, yeah, time and place, so.
Yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, leave it at that. Okay, so we will vote on the deferral of this motion. All those in favor? And that passes. So the original and with Counselor Reed opposed. So we will take this forward and thank the committee for the work that they're doing for now, but we'll continue to move this forward to the Budget and Audit Committee and have some more dialogue about that. Thank you very much. We'll move next to item number seven, the City of Cambridge Climate Action Plan. And I think, thank you, Gina Cliff, who's the manager of Community Emergency Planning, Kim Ireland from STAN-TAC and Kate Daly from the region of Waterloo to present. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'm just going to successfully received eighty thousand dollars grant funding from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities under the Municipalities for Climate Mitigation Program. With that, we, we're building off our climate mitigation program as well and looking at preparing our first corporate climate adaptation plan and strategy, looking at our corporate buildings and assets in that plan. We established an internal climate adaptation planning committee. And with that, what their mandate is to develop recommendations, looking at policies, programs, initiatives, and really looking at some strategies we can look at from the adaptation for climate change itself. And then what we do is we do sit on or participate in the region of Waterloo Community Adaptation Planning Process as well. So that's just kind of giving you the background. And I'll hand it over to Kim to talk a little bit more about the plan.
Thank you. Thanks for your time today. I'm going to be giving a high-level overview of the City of Cambridge's Climate Adaptation Plan that STAN-TAC was involved with, is with city staff. So at a high level, provide a brief background and the purpose as well as the process, a review of what climate will look like in 2050 in Cambridge, as well as the guiding principles of the plan, and a snapshot of the adaptation plan itself. Then we'll talk about the next steps and an opportunity for questions. So I just wanted to provide a little clarification of the context. So in the past, we've had presentations with regards to mitigation. So that's actions taken to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and the city's made fantastic progress on that end. So today, we're speaking to the adaptation. So we know climate is changing. So this plan is how do we adapt to that changing climate? So this is the adaptation plan. So the purpose of the plan is multifaceted. First, it aligns with regional and neighboring cities' efforts. It also aligns with the city's strategic priorities. Also, we have the recent challenges. There are real risks happening now and real implications. So we need to be able to respond to those. And of course, there's public opinion. We know it's becoming increasingly important. Climate change is real and it is a top priority for many Canadians. So as Gina was mentioning, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities had a funding opportunity, and City of Cambridge had a contribution to the project or the whole plan as well. So the, the plan acknowledgement by council will allow the release of the FCM funding. The focus of the plan is on the city-owned assets. So it's the corporate plan. So it's dealing with the land, buildings, infrastructure and services. So at a high level, the process has been over the last couple of years. There's been multiple opportunities for input from city staff as well as from other stakeholders, including community and other local stakeholders in the region. So there was, Engage Cambridge was used as a format to provide community input as well as a workshop. So at a high level, what will Cambridge look like in 2015? There'll be rising temperatures, there'll be increased precipitation, and there will be increased frequency of some extreme weather events, such as heat waves, drought, ice storms, snowstorms, and also very intense precipitation. These things are also going to lead to changes to the ecosystem, potential water restrictions, changes to flora and fauna and new pests. So in development of the plan, we had three guiding principles. So paramount, we have the safety of the public as well as city staff. Next, we have property protection, and of course, the service delivery to the community. So three, through the workshops and the collaboration with city staff, there were five main themes that arose. Those would be the neighborhood flooding, infrastructure resiliency, community resiliency, built environment, meaning the buildings themselves, and the natural environment. And out of those five general themes, there were a multitude of action items that were developed. I provided a sample of those action items here. So looking at the next steps, there'll be the implementation of the short-term actions and initiating the planning and budgeting for those longer-term, more, longer-term and more budget requirement actions. The Climate Change Adaptation Committee will continue to be active with quarterly meetings as well as reporting back to council. And the City of Representatives will continue to be part of the Climate Adaptation Working Groups with the region of Waterloo. So now the opportunity for any questions.
Yes, questions. Counselor Liggett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I went through this and what I, thank you very much. It's a very well-shortened version of the greater picture. About four years ago, Counselor Ermetta, Counselor Wolf and I attended a conference that had to do with risk management assessment. And we were told this was all coming four years ago, that all these danger, danger signs, right? I was just in discussion with Paul Wilmes, who is away on holidays, and I'm not sure if he was able to reach out in time for you people tonight presenting. But one of my concerns was when we talk about the city trees in this, under the action plans, we don't specify the priority of the shade trees for homeowners. So we have our tree species list in which we provide to a homeowner a free tree, but the problem- the problem is, a lot of those are short stature trees. So they're not replacing the canopy trees that we're losing with, with, we had the tornado that came through. I lost a tree that, that year. I lost another big tree with an ice storm two years later. So we see that happening all of the time, and my concern is that we are actually not saying that the priority should be the large, larger trees, like red buds are a beautiful tree that get to be a big canopy. And I think every homeowner who has the property should really have one. They're stunning trees. So I'm wondering if we can put in here, and Paul had suggested the wording, and that's why I was wondering if he, if he was able to get to you in time for tonight, that under the proposed actions in the Corporate City of Cambridge Adaptation Plan, under number one, develop an approved landscape species list, that we actually say enlarged stature trees that provide exponential climate adaptation benefits compared to small ornamental trees should be prioritized. And that's right before the promote community understanding and buy-in of the approved species list. So we should be pushing those larger trees and making those suggestions to the homeowner when they come to us for that tree selection. So is it, can we get that in there for this plan?
Yeah, I think those are great suggestions. I hadn't received that message from Paul yet, but.
Yeah, he's on holidays.
Oh, okay, or before, so. But yes, we can certainly incorporate that into the, the plan and provide that detail.
Great, thanks.
So Gina, did you get them, or you'll get the, you know?
Look at the exact wording.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Armeta.
Is it, oh, okay, there I am. Yeah, I don't want to ask an unfair question, so I'll word it more as a statement. And I may have missed it in the report, because I read it through pretty quickly when I was on vacation. But anyways, it's about the tree canopy, which I'm glad that you've made mention of in here, that we just aim for a certain percentage that will have a meaningful impact on mitigating some of what's going to happen and, and trying to at least reverse some of the effects if we're able to, in terms of the warming climate and that. Like, having, like, kind of reducing the urban heat island and, and things like that, and, and dealing with better flood control measures and things like that, that the vegetation can provide.
Yeah, I would say you've kind of hit a lot of the, the topics there, and, and you are correct in your interpretation there.
Thank you. Counselor Liggett.
One other thing I forgot to ask, and then I'll, if you could just answer it, and then I'll say what I wanted to say as part of the question, but it's just a little bit convoluted. Was Hydro part of your discussions? Were they a partner, they were a partner in this? Okay. So I had a conversation with Ian Miles a couple of years ago, as well as the person down there in charge of Hydro, down Hydro lines and costing of that, and I forget the gentleman's name, but we had a very good conversation. And I had said to them that why do they keep putting up, in particular, I'll say Franklin Boulevard, every time there's a big ice storm? Just in recently, twice I can think of where all those poles came down, and they were put right back up above ground. So common sense says that when those things happen, why are we not looking at putting those below ground so that the cost doesn't keep being the same? Because we're paying for that every time. And Mr. Miles said that nobody had ever thought to bring that to the board. They've just not had that discussion. So I'm wondering, Madam Mayor, you're part of the board, and maybe you could take that forward, but maybe our staff could also have that discussion, and, you know, maybe we can move forward in the future towards something like this.
With that committee, what we can do is bring these suggestions forward, and this plan is always improving, and so this is great suggestion, so we can just keep including those kind of conversations and stakeholders, and looking at what we can, we can do to improve it.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. No other questions from members of council, but I certainly have a suggestion and a, and a comment and a question. Very recently, the province had canceled the 50 million tree program from the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry that was seeking to not only plant 50 million trees between about 10 years, ending in 2024, but there was also a very robust 2 million, or 2 million urban tree program that went along with that. As the province stepped back from it, I believe that the federal government has stepped forward to, to ensure that that keeps going. I'm just wondering, has, has the city or has your committee investigated what the 2 million urban tree program looks like, and could we adopt at least part of it here for the City of Cambridge?
Yes, what we can do, again, we'll take that back to the committee. We didn't have that discussion at any of the workshops that we recreated the plan with, but I certainly have noted it, and we'll definitely have a discussion to look at how we can incorporate that in.
Thank you. No other questions. Thank you so much. Welcome, Kate.
Thank you so much. Good evening. I'm Kate Daly. I'm the Environmental Sustainability Specialist at the region of Waterloo, and with me tonight is Nick Cloat, who is our Planning Coordinator for Climate Change, and we're really quite pleased to be here this evening, especially on a night when you're considering your own corporate climate adaptation work, and it's been great to be able to hear about that as well. Just before I change the slide, the picture on the right was taken in Cambridge, the picture on the left was taken in Woolwich, as some of the, to illustrate a bit of the kinds of impacts that we're talking about when we're talking about adapting to climate change. So to go over briefly what I'll cover tonight, I'll talk a little bit about community-wide adaptation, a bit about the project leadership and stakeholders for this community-wide project we've been working on, the process and plan development that we've used, and then our next steps. So it's important to emphasize that we're talking about our community-wide adaptation plan, and that's been developed by the community, and our role in that at the region has been as facilitators with support from ICLI Canada. Community-wide adaptation, in contrast to the corporate plans, like the one that you're considering formally this evening, focus on, and those corporate plans focus on an organization's operations in areas under its jurisdiction. When we're talking about community-wide adaptation, those are items that will involve people and groups from across the community, and those are areas that no single organization can address by themselves. So corporate plans, like the one you're looking at tonight, and community plans, like the one that we're speaking about this evening, are meant to complement each other and work together. An example briefly would be cooling and warming centers. So public health at the region coordinates a working group of organizations that provide cooling and warming centers to deal with extreme temperatures, such as the City of Cambridge. So really, those kind of interjurisdictional and collaborative endeavors. And the area municipalities, like the City of Cambridge, are key stakeholders that are already working on many of these areas, as you are in your own planning, though they're not necessarily the leads on individual items within the plan. So this community-wide plan recognizes and connects the work being done by our municipalities like Cambridge and the corporate adaptation planning you're already undertaking. In terms of the project leadership and stakeholders, I'm going to focus in my brief comments tonight on our community partners group. Those are our key stakeholders, providing ongoing and direction and leadership for the development of the community-wide plan. And that involves area municipal staff, GRCA, community service organizations, and others. Other examples of other partners, the Electrical and Gas Utilities, School Boards, Reap Green Solutions has been involved, the Homelessness and Housing Umbrella Group, really a broad group of stakeholders providing that direction. And the City of Cambridge has participated as part of that community partners group, which we very much appreciate, especially, we're grateful to Gina Cliff, as well as James Etienne for their participation, and we've had additional expertise from Paul Wilmes, Krasimski, and we really do appreciate the staff's support on that. In terms of process, plan, and development, following that same five-milestone process that appeared in the earlier slide deck, we are on Milestone Three, which is the development of the community-wide plan. And that involves creating the plan and identifying what we've got now as 36 draft actions that have next steps identified in the plan to address those 20 priority impacts of climate change that were identified in earlier stages of the process. And just to highlight where we are, so, and what's coming next, we are having a draft of that full plan going, and the shorter version of it will be going directly to Regional Council and the public, starting next week on the 13th. And we will also have the, the full plan draft available at that time. We'll be receiving feedback from the community partners, from stakeholders, members of the public, between the 14th of August formally and September 7th. And as part of that, we are visiting all of the area municipal councils, and you folks are our first. We were really delighted to be invited to do it as part of this broader conversation you're already having, so that's really our pleasure. And because we are coming a bit early to you folks, and the draft plan isn't out yet, city staff will be circulating that draft plan overview and the link to the 115-page draft plan, as well as information on how to provide feedback. So we would certainly love to hear from you with your thoughts as part of that community outreach process. And then the final plan, we expect to go to Regional Council for their consideration as a requirement of our funding on November 5th. And then most importantly, after that stage, we'll be moving to the implementation stage, and that's an ongoing process that will require ongoing work from our community partners group, and we're very much looking forward to continued contributions from City of Cambridge staff as we move forward with implementation and the reviewing and monitoring cycles in the coming years. So thank you so much for your time and consideration tonight. That's our contact info. Again, I'm Kate, and that's Nick. We would be happy to hear from you after the fact, and of course, happy to take questions now if there are any.
Thank you, Kate. Just a sec. No questions, but thank you very much for your presentation.
We appreciate it, and we'll be circulating that information as it comes.
Great, thank you very much. Counselor Armato, you have the motion to put on the floor.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Montero, as printed, item seven.
Thank you. Any questions or debate from members of council? Seeing none, we're ready to call the question. All those in favor? And the chairs in favor, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Now we'll move forward, members of council, with the consent procedure. And Counselor Adshad, you have the motion.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Montero, that the consent procedure be adopted as printed.
Sorry, I missed that. What's that? Without item two. Yes, because we dealt with that separate when it was pulled. Yeah, item two was out. It was pulled. Yes, it was. Okay. Any comments from council members? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All of those in favor? And that carries. Now, I know that we have a good group here from the Blue Heron Ridge, so that passed. So thank you so much for coming. We'll move forward now with notice of motion. And Counselor Reed, I believe you have made a notice of motion.
I don't have it in front of me.
For September.
You want me to read it? And yes, I do have that the cost to review the Blair Village Heritage Conservation District Plan be incorporated and considered in the draft 2020 budget.
Thank you. Any other business? Counselor Mann.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have one item, and maybe we could just give direction to staff to take a look at this. We've heard about some Airbnb activities in and around our province of late, and I wonder if, when Airbnbs are established, what rules or regulations there are that apply to them, and if we can look at other municipalities and see if there are any other best practices that we could review to see if they would fit into our context, and how we could apply those to people who want to establish an Airbnb in our community.
Thank you. That will be direction to staff. Thank you very much. Any non-jurisdictional items? Seeing none, we'll move to the confirmatory bylaw. Counselor Liggett.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Mann, the confirmatory bylaw as printed.
Thank you. All those in favor? And that carries. And now we have the close of meeting. Counselor Mann.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Liggett. The, the meeting does now close, or adjourn at 8:08 PM.